A meeting of Littleton City Council to order. City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Schlatter.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tamar.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Peters.
Here.
Councilmember Reichardt.
Here.
Councilmember Zink.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Well, we do have some guests in the audience here. We have some Boy Scouts from Troop 114, and our next item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So do you young men want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? So please rise as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Councils had a chance to review the agenda. Any changes? Seen no changes. It's approved without objection. Item four is proclamations. We have one proclamation tonight. Proclamation of the City of Littleton, Colorado proclaiming May 4th through May 10th, 2025, Professional Municipal Clerks Week in the City of Littleton. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the position of municipal clerk is the oldest position among public servants, being one of the first governmental positions created by early colonists, and whereas municipal clerks have responsibility to maintain public records, the city code, run elections, and other duties statutorily required, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk serves as the historian of the community and is charged with protecting its history, and whereas municipal clerk serves as the professional link between citizens, local governing bodies, and other government agencies, whereas the office of the municipal clerk has become the hub of local government, providing the professional link between the citizens, the local government, that's in there twice, whereas municipal clerks have pledged to ever be mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the responsibilities of their office through continued education and annual meetings of local, state, county, and international professional organizations. Now therefore I, Kal Schlechter, Mayor of the City of Littleton, do hereby proclaim May 4th to May 10th, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend the appreciation to our city clerk, all of the city clerk's office staff for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community. So, thank you. Council assemble.
It's like the Avenger.
I'm Captain America. Be kind to lawyers day on May 1st.
All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is a time for members of the community to express opinions regarding issues that are not part of public hearings on tonight's agenda. Separate opportunity will be provided for comment during any public hearing. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. I will let you know when you get to your three minute mark. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated, and City Council is not authorized under Colorado open meeting laws to take action at this meeting on any issue raised by public comment. It's not part of tonight's agenda. I may refer matters to the City Manager or Attorney for feedback. When you come up to the podium, please state your name and address. We have nine people signed up here. Do you wish to speak and do not sign up? We'll give you an opportunity at the end. First up, we have Mark Flink.
Good evening. I am Mark Flink, a 35-year resident of the Southbridge neighborhood and a daily walker-runner on the High Line and Jackass Gulch spur trails. While I still have hope that four of you will kill the spur trail paving project, tonight I want to be certain that in my three minutes, the citizens of Littleton understand that the federal, state, and Rapid County open space public funds that Littleton has and will use to design and construct the 16-foot wide concrete road through Jackass Gulch open space were obtained through grant applications with materially false and misleading statements. As examples, in 2021, Littleton stated in this grant application to CDOT that the Jackass Gulch paving project was just, quote, "implementation of Littleton's transportation master plan recommendations." The elements in this project were identified in Littleton's TMP, and this project will help the city implement key safety and connection projects, close quote. In a supplement to CDOT, Littleton again referred to the, quote, "goals identified in the City of Littleton's transportation master plan," close quote. The problem for Littleton is that not, that the project for paving the Jackass Gulch Trail was not one of the 87 active transportation products, projects identified in the TMP. Littleton further stated in supplemental submission to CDOT that the, quote, "improvements proposed will provide a more cohesive and accommodating walking and biking network for the hundreds of residential dwellings within the one-mile travel shed of the light rail station." First, the experts who helped put together the TMP used a one-half mile walk shed and explained, quote, "This distance of one-half mile is used as a standard in determining the walkability of an area. Sometimes a five-minute or one-quarter mile walk shed is used, most commonly for measuring connections to bus service," close quote. Second, and more importantly, whether a one-quarter, one-half, or one-mile walk shed is used, the graphic on the screen created by the city shows there is not a single home, let alone hundreds, that is within a one-half or one-mile walk of the mineral station using the Jackass Gulch Trail to the east of Jackass Hill Road. As the TMP notes, the mineral station walk shed coverage is poor. It is a fiction to think that by paving the Jackass Gulch recreational trail, citizens will decide they now are willing to walk more than twice, three, or four times a standard one-half mile distance to get to the mineral station. RTDs in Littleton's mistake in building the mineral station with a poor walk shed should not be compounded by placing a 16-foot wide concrete road through the Jackass Gulch that standard and accepted transportation analysis tells us will not be used by pedestrians to get to the station. City Council should not ruin a recreational trail for walkers and runners in an effort to achieve a socially engineered result that is neither practical nor attainable. Please rethink and stop the spur trail paving project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flink. Next up is Andrew Ernstein.
Yes. Thank you. I'm Andrew Ernstein. I wanted to ask, who outside of this chamber knows what the Littleton City flag looks like? It's there. I've never seen it outdoors. A flag should be identifiable, unique, and flown outdoors. Also, most vexilologists will tell you that flags should not have lettering on them. Our national flag and our state flag follow those criteria. Therefore, since we don't fly the Littleton City flag outside, I would say that Littleton does not effectively have a city flag. Please observe this flag, which was designed by my child, who would be here except they're finishing up their senior year of college, made by a former city council member. It speaks to our Western agricultural history with the spur design, the South Platte River running through the middle of the flag, and the rise of industry and technology in the importance of our economic life in Littleton. I would like to know who on city staff I can connect to to try to make adopting this flag a reality, and it is designed by a graduate of Heritage High School, resident of this city, and I think it would make an improvement to civic pride in our city if it were adopted. Also, as a regular user of the spur trail, I concur with the previous speaker. I would far prefer it to remain crush gravel over becoming concrete. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Don Brunz.
Good evening, Council. Don Brunz, District 4. Mary Carter Greenway has been a great outdoor asset since first designed some 50 years ago. Thousands from both recreational clientele's love its parallel hard surface and crusher fine trails. As you know, Council approved replacing the existing spur trail with what is in effect a 16-foot wide concrete roadway. Although that radical designs, redesigns, ostensible purpose was transportation mobility by now, you know the design was misinformed for most going to and from mineral station by human power already use other, more direct routes. Excuse me. That strange design also does not fit the open space setting, nor would its hard surface yield the same value-added recreating health benefits as the crusher fine surface now does. Last week, I again walked the trail, and this time with several people who understand what's at stake. We walked from High Line Canal to the Mineral Light Rail Station, experienced the trail design expertise, excuse me, experienced trail design expertise accompanied us, including a trail design books author. The ensuing dialogue was provocative. Two things of particular interest emerged. First was the sidewalk precariously adjoining minerals shoulder from Jackass Hill Road's intersection with Mineral to Santa Fe. It's a safety hazard. Suggested relocation further north and planted trees in the buffer thereby vacated would reduce the hazard and make the sidewalk more enjoyable. Secondly, dialogue continued on how to simultaneously meet the desires of both hard surface and crusher fine users along the entire Santa Fe to High Line Canal route. Retracing our steps back to the High Line Canal, someone asked, "What if the city actually did, one, relocate the sidewalk further north, two, plant a tree-lined buffer between it and Mineral, three, install a crusher fine surface for a safe descent below the trail's west end next to the station as a link to Mary Carter's crusher fine trail, four, keep and take care of the crusher fine spur trail, and finally modify the approved concrete behemoth to make it an actual trail paralleling the existing crusher fines trail?" That seasoned trail planner in our group replied simply, "The city would receive an award," which begs asking two questions, both respecting Council's authority. Wouldn't you rather win an award for what you end up building or keep on tightly clinching like Uncle Scrooge to outside dollars you fear losing for a design you now know has been proven faulty in many ways? Thank you for hearing this appeal to modify this approved plan, and please seize the opportunity as do good public servants.
Thank you, Mr. Brunz.
To do good as public servants while there's still time. Sorry, I mixed up my words, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Greg Sullivan.
First, I salute the Scouts. I was an Eagle Scout myself, and very proud of my time as a Scout. And what I'm going to say today has a lot to do with scouting and the environment. There is an environmental merit badge. I've given you some information. You can look at it. I think it's appropriate. I'm happy to come to your, to your meeting and talk about it. Today, who am I? Greg Sullivan, District 4. Council, say no to Costco's 32 gas pumps and save our children. There they are. Okay? They're right here. Today is World Asthma Day. Today is World Asthma Day, and asthma is the commonest chronic disease in children and adolescents. An estimated 15% of the world's population suffers from a disease. Mineral Place is going to be a hot mess of CO2, NO2s, and PM 2.5. They're going to affect children. Canvas update. I placed 3,194 flyers on doors about the Mineral Place, and I've got 263 signatures now, and they're saying no to 32 gas pumps. The moratorium on retail fuel stations has been agreed to by the council. You did it. Good job. I have informed, have you informed Costco wholesale that the building permit for the 32 pumps is on hold? Big question. If not, when are you going to tell them? You've got a six-month moratorium. Got to tell them. That's the only, only thing to do. Andrea. Andrea wrote me a letter and said that the gas station locations should be based on the forces of supply and demand. All right. Well, I think that logic doesn't quite work with gas stations which are polluters. This is a serious problem for the nearby schools. Littleton Academy, Primrose, Primrose School right there. The other day, I was walking down, and there were 15 students coming back from Ryder's Park by a teacher from the Littleton Primrose School. Who's going to take care of those kids when those cars come in to get their gas at Costco? I find that the council has really got a poverty of imagination. You can do better. Let me quickly give you my recommendations. City staff, do the market analysis of fuel centers on 32, 32 gas pumps, and include a health impact study. This need to include a cost-benefit analysis of the mitigation interventions that you're going to do. In the coming months, I will provide health economics data on you on what the impacts are. I recommend that an outside party conduct the research on the fuel station to give a fair and balanced analysis, and you share that results with us. There must be less greenwashing by you on unreal, unrealistic planned interventions that you're going to take. Trees is not going to do it. Again, Environmental Stewardship Director and the Public Works Director need to go, need to go to Mineral Place and find out what's going on. You're in a PPP. I don't know why you forget that.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Littleton Tree Trust, $70,000. Apply to Trees, please.
Next up is Paul Bohm.
Good evening. My name is Paul Bohm. I live at 5657 South Forest Hill Street, and I am here to present further observations regarding the conditions of the 5600 block of South Forest Hill Street north of the Littleton Brewing Company. We have been told that a crosswalk on Littleton Boulevard has been approved. When will there be any evidence that this is actually going to take place? We have been told that a permit parking is the last resort. I am curious as to what other alternatives have been considered, and when will City Council reach that last resort? I bring to your attention that residential services and resources have been compromised. I watched the city sweeper go down the middle of the street, brushes up because he could not get to the curb on either side of our street. There are other residents that have had their trash collection bins moved, and consequently, their trash collector will not pick them up. Police officers are spending time writing tickets for infringement on access to alleys and to driveways that could be used elsewhere. There's an increased danger from the increased traffic flow and people hastily turning around to try and grab the one available parking space on that street. A car passed within two feet of me when I was trying to back into my parking space, had no regard for the fact that I was swinging across the traffic lane. There are at least six blocks that have been adversely affected on a regular basis. 5500, 5600, South Forest Hill, 5600 Elmwood, 5600 Greenwood. I'm submitting a petition that we sent out informally, and we have 13 signatures out of 13 residents on the 5600 block of Forest Hill Street. Responding to this, we are asking for rezoning if necessary and issuance of residential permit parking from 11:00 to 9:00 PM. Signage and/or street painting to indicate driveway and alley allowances per code, and accurate and timely noise monitoring later than 5:00 because that's when the business really starts humming. You are in a difficult position. I realize that you must decide whether you will promote Littleton as a family, residential friendly place to live, or a business-friendly place. From my perspective, these are not currently mutually compatible. Please review City Code and Charter 10-4-9, which includes these words, "All development in the city for which an SDP is required shall provide sufficient parking spaces to accommodate the number of vehicles that are normally attracted to such development." My wife is going to have surgery and needs to be able to park on the street so she can get in and out of our vehicle that next week. Please do not ignore the residents on.
Thank you, Mr. Bohm.
Forest Hill Street. Thank you for your consideration.
Next up is Dee Bohm.
Dee Bohm, 5657 South Forest Hill Street. I'm reading the words of Mr. Ken Soul, who's the owner and landlord of the property at 5648 South Forest Hill Street. We own a single-family rental home on Forest Hill Street, which has been seriously impacted since the opening of the Littleton Brewing Company location. Most of these homes on Forest Hill do not have off-street parking and rely on parking on Forest Hill for the residents and for visitors to their home. Since the opening of the Littleton Brewing location, the street has been a traffic jam and consistently parked up, forcing many tenants and residents to park blocks away to access their own homes. Additionally, patrons of the brewery have been moving trash and recycling bins off the street to create parking for themselves, which forces the residents to miss their trash and recycling pickup. The trash company requires five feet on either side of the bins for the pickup to be made without danger of damage to vehicles. We don't have a problem with the brewery opening and operating, and in fact, think it's a great addition to Littleton. However, other arrangements need to be made for their overflow patron parking besides Forest Hill Street. It is my understanding that they only have six to eight designated parking spaces on the property. With a capacity of well over 100 people, how and where were they expecting people to park? My current tenant is fully disabled, and there have been countless times his wife has left to take him to doctor's appointments just to return and not be able to park near their own home. We have a couple of rentals in Inglewood, in the block adjacent to Swedish Hospital, and Inglewood has created permit-only parking on that block to allow residents to park in front of their own homes. This would be a great solution on Forest Hill Street with the result of giving residents quiet enjoyment and immediate access to their property while redirecting brewery patrons to designated commercial parking in the area. We are very concerned that this will create a problem renting this property in the future. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bohm. Next up is Steve Lowry.
My name is Steve Lowry, District 3. Now that we have been able to review additional documents related to the Mineral Spur Trail, I'd like to clarify a few items. First, the mayor's statement on April 15th where he said, "One of the biggest things we have to do as council is look for the greatest good for the most number of people in our community," unquote. In the case of the spur trail, this implies that a 16-foot wide concrete trail would somehow serve the most people. However, this is incorrect. Case in point is an email to council members on March 12th from a local runner named Michelle who said, quote, "If you insist on turning the trail into all concrete, this will effectively stop me and most other runners from using it." Second, if you the city's application to Rapid County Open Spaces, April 2023, contained several incorrect or questionable statements. For instance, the application states there is no opposition to the project when earlier project, earlier public comments had clearly been opposed to a concrete trail. Letters in favor of the project that was supposed to come from the public only came from current or past members of the Transportation Mobility Board, and as we recently learned, may not have been fairly represented in the Transportation Mobility Board at that time. The application also made it clear that the funds for paving were not available. The paving could be, quote, "tabled," i.e. the paving is an independent part to the project and not bundled with the other work, as has been repeatedly stated by city staff. Additionally, the city has not complied with some terms of the agreement, such as having public engagement once a 90% design was completed. Along with other consistencies and incorrect statements in the application, we feel there are enough reasons for us to ask Rapid County Open Space to consider revoking their grant of $562,000. Similar situation exists with the CDOT application that would. Similar situation exists with the C.D.O. application that was done in twenty-twenty. If this project is constructed as currently planned, uh, these inconsistencies would arise when it comes time for C.D.O. to consider reimbursement, uh, one-point-six-million dollars to the city. So there's a risk for approving this project.
Thank you, Mr. Lowry. Uh, next up is Brienne Switzenberg.
Hi, City Council. I'm Brienne Switzenberg, and I live at five-six-six-eight, South Forest Hill Street, and I'm here to strongly request permit parking for our block due to the impact that Littleton Brewery has had on our safety, our accessibility, and our livelihoods. The residents of Forest Hill Street have voiced parking concerns and requests since our first meeting that took place August two thousand twenty-two, concerns which have been disregarded by the city still three years later. We voiced concerns about the impact that approving a business for only five parking spaces would have on our street, a business that on a sunny summer weekend day can hold two-hundred people. It's mind-boggling to everyone I have spoken to in these three years why a city would approve only five onsite parking spaces for a business that can hold two-hundred people. It's mind-boggling why a city would disregard the lives of the people whose homes are on Forest Hill Street and dump the responsibility onto the residents that live there. Our streets fill up on weekdays about three P.M. and on weekends at eleven A.M. It stays full until ten at night. I am selling my home, and I wasn't able to do open houses because of this. My son no longer has safe access to the front of our home because of this. We can't have social events with our friends and families at our home because of this. I can't pop into my home to grab an item I forgot because of this. Access to our home by contractors, repair professional, or even emergency professionals are affected by this. The city said we need to get used to a new normal, but this is not a new normal for all of Littleton. This is not what every street in our neighborhood has to deal with now. On a busy weekend, the entire block of Forest Hill Street is packed full of cars, but other streets in our neighborhood are completely empty. The city needs to not dump the responsibility onto its residents and instead come up with different systems. In a meeting a few weeks ago, a very intelligent resident mentioned reorganizing how the city does business parking and making business parking lots shared parking, which I thought was genius. However, if the city did do that, but did not give permit parking options to the resident streets, our neighborhood streets would still be fully accessible to every patron of a business. And we all know that humans do not park somewhere far and walk more if they have access to park ten feet away. Without permit parking, we would be in the exact same situation we are now. If the city of Littleton's goal is to revamp Littleton Boulevard with new businesses, it needs to come up with new systems that protect the livelihoods of the residents who call Littleton home. The same situation happened with Cherry Cricket, and residents on Forest Hill Street have been voicing concerns in trying to get permit parking for three years. Offering residents the ability to get permit parking on their block allows residents to protect what's what is important to them if they choose, and it helps the residents believe in their city again, believe that their city is not dumping a problem onto them and ignoring the importance of their safety and accessibility to their homes and neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Switzenberg. Uh, last person set up is Pam Chadbourne.
Good evening, Council. My name is Pam Chadbourne. I live about a block and a half from here. So first, I do wanna talk a bit about the flag. I was here when, uh, years ago when the flag, uh, student came to propose his flag. I'm gonna say, please don't pick one flag if there's not a fair competition, open to everyone again. Um, second of all, I have no problem with the existing city flag. Uh, he didn't even research whether the city had a flag when he came here. And a final thing that really irks me is, uh, the utility box that was painted on the corner of Mineral and and Jackass Hill Road, um, had Flags of All Nations, which was painted over against the First Amendment rights to, uh, free speech, uh, because of a protest by somebody who didn't like that, uh, but wanted something else kind of mechanistic like that design. No, um, no, I disagree with the flag thing, but everybody else I pretty much do agree with, so, um, but let me talk about a few other things. Another so ago, Chief Stevens presented, uh, a proposal on the possible use of Flock license plate readers. I wanna make sure you've all heard that the Denver City Council just voted against that use in Denver because of privacy concerns. It was a unanimous vote. Um, please send the message and make sure that Littleton doesn't adopt Flock, uh, license plate readers and preserve the presumption of innocence. I don't believe that citizens should be surveilled all the time. Uh, we are innocent, and we shouldn't be surveilled all the time. And protect our data. In today's environment, that data is vulnerable to all sorts of theft. So it it is not worth it, uh, in terms of, uh, law enforcement. There are other ways to protect us than surveilling us all the time. Second of all, for boards and commissions, I just wanna mention that we need onboarding packets. This has come up year after year, and I've watched the new boards and commissions, and they're not there. So, uh, and also, legal training must be public. Used to be public years ago. It was made, now it's done out of sight. There's no good reason for that. Legal training to the boards and commissions must be public. Finally, I wanna talk about the lack of a proposal process for the North Gateway that was public and that gave us, uh, alternatives for scenarios. So the D.G.A. did receive like a forty-page, thirty-nine-page packet, but the rest of us haven't seen that. And the area being considered includes the Rappo County Building and the city center. It says the city center costs us too much, and and so, uh, you know, kind of suggests it would be rebuilt beyond, it, but the title of it is Geneva Village. Um, so any feasibility first and alternatives in design early in the design process must be provided. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam. Is there anybody else in the audience that wish to speak tonight?
Good evening, Council. Ned Stern, District Four. Let me switch my glasses. I'd like to address some answers given to council by South Suburban Parks and Recreation Department Representative Melissa Reese Thacker at the April fifteenth City Council meeting. I think it's fair to say that South Suburban has been using every angle to denigrate crusher fines trails. It's time to change their attitude. When Steve Barr asked, "Melissa, do you know if South Suburban has other kinds of ADA-accessible crusher fines trails within your network? Is that something that you currently actually operate or maintain elsewhere in your neighborhood, i- in your network?" Melissa replied, "No, we do not." Well, South Suburban clearly maintains the ADA-accessible crusher fines trail along the Mary Carter Greenway, among others. As a frequent user of the Greenway Trail, it is clear gravel migration onto the concrete is minor to nonexistent, even with grass separation between the concrete and crusher fine paths of as little as one foot to zero feet. South Suburban's in-house requirement of a five-foot separation between concrete and crusher fines trail is overkill, unnecessary, and I think it's designed to frustrate the use of crusher fines. In addition, South Suburban has a vehicle-mounted blower that clears any gravel fines and other debris from concrete trails. South Suburban knows full well how to maintain their ADA-accessible crusher fines trails. Joel Zink asked, "Are we able to plow crusher fines trails in wintertime?" Melissa replied, "No, we are not." Well, crusher fines trails clearly can be plowed. In fact, the Leagold's Trail between South Prince Street and the Mary Carter Greenway was plowed after snowstorms for many years. I know this because I would purposely run on this trail segment after snows. Andy Jennings, former director of Parks and Open Space for South Suburban, said that they don't wanna run vehicles on the crusher fines trails after snows because it damages the trails. Yet South Suburban regularly runs trail, vehicles on the trails to plow the bridges and the concrete segments, so this argument holds no water. In addition, there are plow blade accessories designed specifically for plowing crusher fines trails. South Suburban should buy some and start plowing the crusher fines trails to ensure maximum accessibility of the trails for all users. It's time to stop denigrating crusher fines trails and recognize they provide maximum utility to the maximum number of yell, trail users of all types and abilities. Concrete is not the answer to maximize accessibility. Proper maintenance of crusher fines trails is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak? Seeing no one, we will move on. All right, council, uh, reports. Um, let's do it. Councilmember Rekert.
No report.
Councilmember Grove.
Yeah, a couple things. Uh, end of last month, I attended the State of the City for Lone Tree. Um, very well done. They had four-hundred-and-fifty people in a large auditorium and, uh, gave us about an hour overview of what's going on in the city. And if, for those of you that don't know, and I didn't know the details, they're thirty years old, and, um, they have fifteen thousand people. There's a lot of development going on in Lone Tree, and, uh, it was very interesting to learn about all the services that they're working on and providing for their citizens. Uh, I also, uh, attended a sustainability workshop putting on by our Littleton Chamber on what businesses could do to be more sustainable, and learned about a program that people can join for free in, uh, as a corporate member and get some assistance on how to be more sustainable in their community. We heard about, um, from two people, one who manufactures, uh, boxes and containers, and another from our own Breckenridge Brewery, and that was kind of, um, fun. Uh, the program that they talked about was the Green Business Program, and it's for the Tri-Cities area, and, um, if anybody's interested, they can just look that up on the internet. Another thing I attended was ANZAC Day, and you may ask what ANZAC Day is. Um, that's Australia-New Zealand Army Corps, and it's like our Memorial Day, and it takes place in Australia on April twenty-third, and we were here on our April twenty-third the next day. And, um, they had the consulate from, uh, the Australian, um, office here in Denver area, and there's about seventy-five to a hundred people that attended. And it's very much like our Memorial Day, and they pay tribute to the hundred-and-thirty-thousand soldiers that fought in various wars, uh, since nineteen fifteen, in World War One, World War Two, the Korean War, Vietnam War, and in Afghanistan. And it's very serious ceremony, and then afterwards, they, uh, go have a pint in the pub. Everybody walked down to the View House, and it was really fun to talk to the people from Australia a- all over the kind of Denver area. Uh, for those of you that like to go to plays, um, I saw the play Once, which was really fun, very different. Uh, it's over now, but there's, uh, one last play this season. It's called On Your Feet. It starts May twenty-third to June twenty-second at Town Hall. So if you're all interested, it looks like it's really fun. It has Gloria Estefan music, so highly encourage, uh, you to consider, uh, doing that for the last play. And then, uh, today, kind of very relevant from what we've been talking to, um, Councilmember Peters and staff, and I met with South Suburban, uh, two of their board members and their interim board of directors, uh, executive director, excuse me. And we had a very honest conversation about the differences in Littleton, so they would get, uh, the new interim director would get to know how we feel about our community and how we value our open space and value our parks, especially crusher fine trails. We talked a lot about the Mineral Spur. We talked a lot about, um, Jackass Hill, um, Mary Carter Greenway, and some of the, um, parks, uh, in our community, and it was a very honest conversation. I won't say we moved the needle a lot, but because, uh, South Suburban, uh, board members have received so many calls and emails, uh, they really feel like they need to kind of reexamine their policy and put that into some written document and design guidelines for South Suburban, which would help, I think, all of us. Um, so I think the conversation was very open and honest, and everybody was listening to each other, and, um, hopefully, we will continue those conversations as we move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Peters.
No report.
Councilmember Zink.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I had the honor of attending, or I, I don't know if attending's the right word, but I got to go to, uh, rec, uh, my goodness, what is it called? Records Unmain at their opening day. Awesome store. Uh, I love to see small new businesses like this opening up in Littleton. It's, it's a risk that they're taking. I, I understand that, um, there were some difficulties with an accident with the owner that he's having to deal with, um, so I hope that his recovery is going well, but the opening day there, uh, from my perspective anyway, couldn't have gone better. I got to pick up a couple new records, had a great selection, friendly staff, um, so for anyone who is a music lover, highly recommend it, um, and just a privilege to see these kinds of businesses open up here. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Yeah, thank you. Downtown Development Authority is still, uh, getting prepared for the block party on June fourteenth. Anybody looking to be a sponsor, uh, please reach out to Jennifer at the Downtown Development Authority. They have a website. And then this week is, uh, the Littleton, um, Small Business Week. Uh, it might be small business across the state, I'm not quite sure, but, uh, May fourteenth through the tenth, so go out and s- support the small businesses. Uh, Littleton Business Chamber does have a really good website, and you can find out all the activities going on, uh, this week to help, uh, support those small businesses. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Portem.
Just a couple, couple of quick things. Um, attended the South Platte Renew River Cleanup, so I'm here to mostly pat myself on the back. But I attended with my daughter and her friend, and we had a fantastic time, and I just wanted to thank the South Platte Renew team for hosting the event, and, uh, I can't believe it actually occurred on the day that they originally scheduled it this year, um, which was kind of a miracle in and of itself. Um, but, you know, while, uh, as I am wont to do, uh, while we were out with my daughter, you know, picking up trash, um, we had a bit of, a bit of a lesson in stormwater management and what goes, uh, through our outfalls and ends up in our rivers, um, because she and her friend were having a jolly old time, uh, digging out, uh, you know, cans, trash, uh, dental floss, things of that nature, pretty gross stuff. Um, and so just wanted to make this a little final call, you know, as we're passing Earth Day, to remember what kind of, you know, misses a trash can or falls on the street or falls out of your car does end up somewhere. It ends up in my daughter's trash bag as she is cleaning out the outfalls that empty into South Platte River. So, um, thanks South Platte for hosting, and, uh, just be aware of where your trash is going. Um, I also attended the Green Business Talk hosted at Kiln, uh, with the Littleton Business Chamber. It was a fantastic event, and just wanted to say too that, um, you know, I think we have, what it showed me is that we have a lot of businesses here in Littleton who have sustainability at their core model, even if that's not something that they're splashing all over the place in terms of things like packaging and materials usage and transportation. Um, learned a lot of fantastic things. I do wanna give a shout out to, um, Breckenridge Brewery, Hannah Kye, who was there and spoke at it. They're doing some fantastic work with South Platte Renew, turns out, on putting together a completely, uh, cons- post-consumer recycled wastewater beer, um, which I am looking forward to trying here in a couple of weeks. They just got their first shipment of poop, uh, the other day. So, I'm just go to kidding, it's really, really well-treated. Um, so I'm, I'm actually really encouraged by Breckenridge's, you know, commitment to sustainability and their forward thinking, and I'm so happy that they're kind of part of our community showing this kind of thing off. It's a, it's a fantastic event. So I wanted to finish today just by really quickly addressing something that caught my ear in a number of the public comments, and I'm not gonna necessarily, uh, I'm not calling out any specific person, um, and I think, you know, our, our talks around crusher fines are absolutely relevant, um, and I think it's absolutely something we should be kind of working towards. I think there's many reasons I took votes and positions, as I did, on both the Jackass Hill Park as well as the Mineral Spur Trail, but I don't need to reiterate that, 'cause quite frankly, I've also said, you know, quite a bit on it already. But the thing that I wanted to address, um, is around ADA law and Americans with Disabilities Act and the, the law and the code that surrounds it. It's complex, um, and the requirements around it are extremely complex and very nuanced, um, and it is possibly one of the most progressive pieces of legislation ever, you know, quite frankly, put into, um, American law. And, um, it took the work of very hard-hitting advocates for a long period of time to get where it is. Um, and quite frankly, we as a city, in fact, when I first started, we have talked extensively about the fact that, you know, much of our city, our facilities, and things around us remain inaccessible to a huge portion of our population. Um, and I'm not an expert on it, so I'm not gonna sit here and talk about the specifics of ADA law, but what I- But what I wanted to mention was a comment was made by a resident that folks advocating for the accessibility should show up to meetings, should show up and speak out and speak their voice around the issues of accessibility. And I was reminded this weekend by a friend that ADA law exists because people did that advocacy work and that they don't have to show up in our city council chambers to advocate for that accessibility because it is law and it is a right and it's a right that they have. And that I just wanted to remind folks that even if you do not see or experience or speak with folks who have these accessibility concerns, that they do exist in our community and that we have spoken with members of that community and that they are not required to show up here and necessarily advocate on their behalf because those that came before them did so. And so I just wanted to say that, that I was personally just taken aback by that statement. And this is not a debate about the crusher fines at all, but rather just being conscientious of what we say when we talk about folks with disabilities in our community. So appreciate it.
All right, thank you. While it didn't rise to the level of proclamation, this week is also National Travel and Tourism Week. So I just want people to be aware of, visit littleton.org, share it with your friends and family as they think about maybe coming to visit Littleton and see what Littleton offers in terms of tourism. Last week on Friday, I attended the Arapahoe County Commissioners, Mayors and Managers Meeting along with Deputy City Manager Gent over there where South Metro Fire Rescue Staff and Board Directors were there to talk with the various mayors and city managers of Arapahoe County about their budget situation and potential for increasing revenue through either a sales tax or property tax increases. It was quite the thorough discussion, a heated discussion with the mayors and South Metro Fire. And we will welcome South Metro Fire next week at our study session where they will present that, probably the exact same presentation to city council here. So I urge all of Littleton residents to tune in and see what they are thinking about. Also next week, May 14th is the State of the City Wednesday morning at Ashley Ridge, which is at South Park Circle and County Line. I'll be talking, the city manager will be there and there'll be a good presentation of kind of what we are looking at in terms of the status of the city here. Thursday next week, May 15th, the Mile High Flood District Board of Directors and Staff will be going on the annual bus tour. And we are meeting down at Reynolds Landing here in Littleton, so I'm going to welcome everyone there, talk a little bit about Littleton. And then there's a bus tour of Mile High Flood District projects in the area. I don't know exactly what the agenda of those are. I haven't seen that yet, but we'll be driving around, taking a look at some of the things that that district staff does there. And then finally, before all those events take place next week, on Sunday is Mother's Day. So I just want to wish all the moms, including my mom and my wife, the mother of my children and moms in the dais and the moms in the audience, a happy Mother's, early Mother's Day. So that's all I have. So I'm going to turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. I have just a couple of updates. First, I want to just have an update on the traffic concerns in the vicinity of the Littleton Brewing Company. The police department continues to enforce parking regulations in that area with our parking enforcement staff during the day and then with more and more focus from our police, our police officers during the evenings and on the weekends to try to keep those driveways and alleys clear. Second, I know that our Public Works team is exploring the potential of a couple places for disabled parking, you know, signed there on that street there in front of some of those houses that don't have driveways because we recognize that need. And then the final development there is that I know that our Public Works team continues to move toward installing a crosswalk on Littleton Boulevard that will help to keep pedestrians safe or naturally, I think, already crossing the streets or parks south of Littleton Boulevard. It will also facilitate additional parking solutions as we do work with businesses on the south side of the street and other areas there for more organized parking, I would say, to serve that street.
City Manager, I just have a question, since you brought it up with that. With parking on that street, all is, I believe all those residences have alley access at the back and a lot of them have either garage or parking back there. How does that work with alley access parking? That theory wouldn't be publicly accessible for those street parking, sorry.
Mayor, I would look to-
I'm not asking for the answer right now, I just thought of it, so yeah.
Get back to you on that because I think we need to kind of fully understand all the dynamics there in the area. But that should also be explored. My second note tonight is just to let you all know that we do take training for our boards and commissioners seriously. We have a Boards and Commissions Handbook that is distributed to all Boards and Commission members as part of their training that did happen during April. So we'll make sure that that document is available online for the public should anyone else wish to see it, but that we do take that seriously. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney.
Thank you. And I know we'll get into it a little bit later, but Mr. Sullivan had brought up something regarding the fuel station moratorium that council will be considering. And just to let everyone in the audience know, as currently drafted Costco and the QuickTrip location, proposed location over on Santa Fe and Mineral would be exempt from the moratorium. So we'll talk more about that during our public hearing on this. Just a couple of quick notes on some of the pending legislation in front of our Colorado Senate because our council has taken positions on a few of them. One of those being the housing development on faith and educational land, also known as YGB, that failed in the Senate last night. That would have allowed for churches to build a residential on their properties without needing any sort of formal approval from the city. In fact, it would have to be done administratively. So that has failed in the Senate, so that one will go away. The other item of note is the fairness and transparency in municipal court. Unfortunately, that is one that passed both House and Senate. It is with Governor Polis, awaiting his signature. The City of Littleton had taken a position against this. The City of Littleton, along with a number of other jurisdictions, has sent a letter to the governor asking for him to veto this particular bill. And so we will see what happens with that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have scheduled appearances. We have one scheduled appearance about the Colorado Asphalt Paving Association for the City of Littleton's reconstruction in Aberdeen Village.
My name is Tom Clayton. I'm the Director of Training and Member Services for the Colorado Asphalt Paving Association, known as Kappa. We represent the paving industry around the state of Colorado. Each February, Kappa awards the Best in Colorado Asphalt Paving Awards at our Dinner and Program. Each year, the Best in Colorado Asphalt Paving Awards Program is highly competitive and all of the nomination nominated projects are judged by a panel of industry experts. The purpose of this program is to recognize the commitment from agencies and property owners and the funding for the outstanding quality partnerships and project delivery from around the state. Since this program began over 30 years ago, there have been over 337 Best in Colorado Awards presented. This evening, I would like to recognize, excuse me, the City of Littleton for receiving one of these prestigious awards for 2024, the FDR Program and particularly Aberdeen Village. The contractor was Chavis Construction and they worked closely with, in partnership with your Public Works staff, Kimberly Dahl, Matthew Mataschewski and Jeremy Clayton, who delivered the award-winning project. Little child, that's my son. The one and a half million dollar project included full-depth reclamation of various thickness of asphalt totaling over 11,000 tons of hot-mixed asphalt. The successful project had other key elements such as Keywood Infrastructure, who supplied all the asphalt, Road Operators Construction Services, who did all the traffic control. It was noted by the judges that the way this project was done with echelon paving, it allowed for the city's residents to be minimize, have minimized disruption. They were able to go in, pave one street, open it, close it very quickly. That's all in work with Chavis Construction and his team. The project received perfect or near-perfect scores in all the categories that they were judged, and the judges noted that it was extremely smooth, minimal joints, utility work looked great, and it didn't see any segregation of the mix. What that means is that road should last until you all have died. Well, maybe not you. Our judges, our judges said it was an absolutely beautiful project and received near-perfect scores. And we want to congratulate the city and Public Works for their job well done.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, on behalf of our staff, I want to thank the association and just let you know and the council and the public know how proud we are of the way we do this street resourcing work. As councils are aware, our pavement management program has many different approaches. I think the one we took in Aberdeen Village is really the example of the largest investment we can make there. And the fact that we were able to execute the project in the way we did and to be recognized for it, I think, should really give us pride as we work to implement this year's program and all of them in the future. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
As a resident of Aberdeen Village, I would just like to say you are correct. They did it very quickly. They minimized the impact on the residents and it looks great. And my kids, when I die, will still enjoy it.
If we could, Mayor, could we get a photo?
Yeah, Council, can you guys join me below the dais here for a group photo?
Congratulations.
All right, thank you and congratulations to everyone that was involved in that project. And you're welcome to all the residents.
We do appreciate it.
All right, next up, item eight, Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. A, Ordinance 4 of 2025, An Ordinance on First Reading, Amending Ordinance Number 23, Series 2024 Appropriating Funds for the 2025 Annual Budget for All Municipal Purposes of the City of Littleton, Counties of Arapahoe, Douglas and Jefferson, State of Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2025 and ending December 31st, 2025. B, Ordinance 5, 2025, An Ordinance on First Reading of the City of Littleton, Colorado, as the governing body of the City Littleton Sewer Utility Enterprise, amending the 2025 sewer budget. C, Ordinance 6, 2025, An Ordinance on First Reading of the City of Littleton, Colorado, as the governing body of the City of Littleton Storm Water and Flood Management Utility Enterprise, amending the 2025 budget. D, Resolution 42, 2025, Approving a Construction Contract with Chavis Construction, Inc., for the 2025 Mill and Overlay Project, City Project Number 25-03. E, Resolution 44, 2025, Approving License Agreements between the City of Littleton and the Regional Transportation District for construction of one electric communication facilities on the West Main Street Bridge over the Southwest Light Rail Line and two electric facilities on the West Alamo Avenue Bridge over the Southwest Light Rail Line. F, ID 25113, Motion to Approve the Minutes of the April 15th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through F.
Second? We have a motion and a second to approve the entirety of the Consent Agenda. Any further discussion or comments, Council? Seeing none, the voting is open?
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Next up, general business, a few general business items. Tonight, A, Resolution 47, 2025, Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Littleton and the Board of County Commissioners, Arapahoe County, State of Colorado, regarding the 2025 contribution of the Arapahoe County Open Space Program Funds for the Lee Gulch Trail Underpass. We also have Resolution B, Resolution 48, 2025, Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Littleton and South Suburban Parks and Recreation District regarding funding contributions, construction and maintenance of the Lee Gulch Trail pedestrian underpass project. And Resolution C, or C, Resolution 49, 2025, Approving a Third Amendment of the Intergovernmental Agreement with Mile High Flood District regarding design and construction of drainage flood control improvements for Lee Gulch at Broadway. We're going to have one presentation, kind of go through all these at the same time, even though they are individual resolutions. So I'll turn it over to the city manager to kick this off.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we know that these projects or this project really will be a major project for us and will begin soon and have some impacts to traffic on Broadway. But there are some really good things happening with this project. So we've asked our Public Works Director Brent Soderland and our Water Resources Manager Sarah White just to come more of, with an overview of the project so that the council and the public are aware before we seek your approval of intergovernmental agreements with our partners to fund the project. With that, I'll turn it over to our staff.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before I turn the presentation over to Sarah, I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that she took a holistic view regarding this project. I think a lot of times as project managers and engineers, we know, like Sarah knew that she had to fix a drainage channel, but she took a bigger picture view and realized that we could also install the pedestrian underpass as a part of the project. So I'll turn it over to Sarah now, but I just wanted to recognize her for, you know, taking a big picture view for this project.
Hi, thank you. Thank you. Okay. We are talking about all three of these resolutions in regards to this presentation. Specifically, you just listed them all out, Mayor, so I won't list them again. But one in regards to an IGA with Arapahoe County Open Spaces, one with South Suburban, and then an encompassing Third Amendment with Mile High. I'll break those down just a little bit more. But again, just a reminder, we are talking about three resolutions for this project. As you are aware, we have some issues with some of our storm infrastructure throughout the city. One of the bigger ones and one of the one that's going to cause the most impact to our residents is a failing culvert underneath Broadway that is currently conveying Lee Gulch. As we are looking through and designing our alternatives for how we can repair this culvert, it was determined that the slope underneath, or excuse me, the slope adjacent to Broadway and the culvert itself were in such bad repair that we unfortunately are going to have to open cut Broadway, which is a full excavation and is going to be 30 feet deep and is going to cause a lot of disruption to the commuting areas and our residents around that. As we were reviewing that project and looking for alternatives, we did review our master plans for Lee Gulch and some of the master plans that developed that drainage for that Lee Gulch regional drainage way. Lee Gulch currently overtops Broadway and largely- Lee Gulch currently overtops Broadway in large storms and recommended a pipe upsizing and potentially some alternatives to off-source some of that water, including some additional pipes that could be included in there. So as we were looking through there, we also noticed in there that it talked a lot about the Lee Gulch regional trail. As early as that nineteen seventy-eight master plan, it envisioned a linear park along Lee Gulch from the South Platte River to the County Line Road, including a recreational and maintenance trail along all reaches. That has mostly been installed all the way from County Line all the way up to South Platte River, except for the area noted there in red where there is a seventeen hundred-foot detour that goes down to the south before reconnecting on the west side, back down near the High Line Canal. Looking at other regional trails, excuse me, looking at other regional master plans, it noted that a grade separation would be ideal in this area and as noted as an opportunity area for improvement, and as recently as the two thousand twenty-three Littleton Linkage Trail was identified as a area of opportunity from our residents. Including some of my favorite feedback regarding my, the last one is my favorite one, just crossing Broadway is awful. It's true. I've been playing Frogger across Broadway now, looking at all the problems along this this culvert for a couple of months now. It's not a fun corridor to pass. The detour currently on the west side, excuse me, on the east side, is a sidewalk that runs through the Littleton Adventist Hospital, so there's no real room for improvement there. It also has the Lee Gulch South Fork, Lee Gulch South Fork Tributary overflow path, so there's no room for improvement on that side. It currently crosses at Jameson Avenue, which also serves as the emergency access for Littleton Adventist Hospital, and then has a steep detour path on the west side. The High Line Canal, just as a point of reference, the Lee Gulch and High Line Canal connection has ninety-two thousand trail users a year at that connection. Regionally, that trail also connects for important businesses along that area, residences, and Heritage High School on the west and Powell Middle School on the at the east, Runyon Elementary School, which unfortunately is missing a red dot or a red highlight that is right over there by Heritage High School. Those are all potential trail connection users that currently would have to use that detour path at Broadway. What we are proposing is to put in a pedestrian underpass along with the work that we are doing to repair the culvert underneath Broadway. What that currently looks like, and here's your asterisk for this picture, this is still in design, even though we are trying to get off in construction very soon, so what is currently shown as the proposed design may still be tweaked, and we are working through with our partners at South Suburban and Mile High to fine tune the trail connections and where that where all the outfalls come through here. So take it with a grain of salt, it is fairly good, but it may change just a little bit. But the proposal is, on the north side there, you will see a darkened gray line, which is the culvert that we have to replace, irregardless of whether the underpass is approved and continues, is that culvert will be replaced. Then the proposed design for the underpass would connect the Lee Gulch Trail on the east side to the west side just north of that connection near the YMCA. We would also be rerouting the storm flows for the South Fork, Lee Gulch South Fork emergency conveyance on the west side, or the east side that runs by the hospital. That also has to be rerouted all onto the west side as well. That being said, this project, based on estimates from January of this year, construction costs only were approximately eight million dollars. To repair the culvert cost alone, again, just the construction cost, were somewhere around three point five million dollars. So, excuse me, the total cost, total construction cost included the the underpass as well. Being able to split the overhead cost with culvert repairs is approximately four point two million dollars for the underpass funding, which if you conceptually thinking, the comparison thinking, the box culvert replacement estimate was ten point six million dollars for the High Line Canal at Arapahoe Road, and that is just the box culvert alone. So we reached out to some funding partners, Arapahoe County Open Space and South Suburban, who were very supportive of installing this underpass. They have granted us, awarded us their grant, Arapahoe County funding fifty percent of that four point two million, providing us grant shares of two point one million. South Suburban has also approved funding for just over a million for us, and then we would be funding an additional one million dollars of that grant funding then. Just, it gets a little confusing because the culvert is not eligible for grant funding through ACOSS. That is not an open space funded thing. That's why funds are split out, so just to clarify that just a little bit. South Suburban has also agreed to operations and maintenance of the trail and the culverts, and they have acknowledged that that will be an estimated annual maintenance cost of just over seven thousand dollars, and they have started to budget for that as well. We do acknowledge that this is going to be a very large impact to traffic, which is why we are open cutting Broadway once, and hopefully only once, and being able to get this installed. The traffic impacts are estimated to be about six months for an interruption just on Broadway. We are keeping one lane of traffic open and in each direction and working with our emergency services provider to see about trying to get an emergency lane through there as well. So this is not the final design for the traffic control, but an estimate of what those impacts will be. An estimated timeline, we are currently working with utilities right now. Again, there is a reason that you do not open cut Broadway. There are a lot of utilities that are underneath there, and there are a lot of very large utilities. You will see the Excel Power Line will actually be on overhead lines for about six months as we need to support a very large line that is coming through there and not disrupting our residents' services, including that of the Littleton Adventist Hospital. We are relocating a couple cabinets that are through there, and the Denver Water Line is a very old unrestrained line that needs to be replaced, and we're working on redundant utilities for that as well. So that is all happening now. The roadway, the open cutting of roadway is coming soon. I do not have an exact date for you. It depends on where we get all of our utilities, when all of that kind of falls into place. Bridge, underpass, everything should be, we are looking to hopefully have done in October of twenty twenty-six. The emergency culvert repairs have to happen, so in able, looking at that, we were able to look and look at our master plans and see that there was another opportunity here, a very unique opportunity to actually put something that was long envisioned from early as that nineteen seventy-six plan, excuse me, nineteen seventy-eight plan that first envisioned perhaps having a trail that can't connect at our entire community on the west and east side. So a pretty unique opportunity that we were able to establish here that also provides us an opportunity to provide cost sharing benefits as well. So with that, I would recommend that you approve the three resolutions, the first one being an IGA with South Suburban, excuse me, with ACOSS, Arapahoe County Open Spaces, I talk an acronym, I apologize, with Arapahoe County Open Spaces to fund fifty percent of the pedestrian underpass, a grant with South Suburban to fund additional twenty-five percent of the underpass, and then a third amendment with a rap, Mile High Flood District, which is the project partner in here and funding all of that, so we are actually sending them the four million dollars and then reimbursing them, reimbursing ourselves with the grant That's all I have. What questions do you have?
Council, any questions? Councilmember Driscoll?
Hey, Sarah, who will be in charge of getting the notices out there to the neighbors to, is that going to be Public Works, is that going to be Littleton, South Suburban?
Yeah, so it will be Public Works. We've already been working with our community team. I've already been on the news once, so we're going to be having some message boards out there at least two weeks prior to, and then I've been meeting with the adjacent business partners around that area to ident, to let them know what's going on, and then we're trying to do as much public outreach as we possibly can. It is going to be a very large disturbance to to that whole corridor, and we just are trying to get to it before something else happens, so, yeah.
Councilmember Grove?
To follow up with Pat's question about community outreach. I know we do a lot of social media, but a lot of people don't, aren't connected that way. Is there, besides a message board, I mean, is there like notices that go to the houses nearby or anything like that?
Yeah, so we've had some, it's been, it's sent out in the Littleton Reporter. We've already had the first, first go around of all of that, and then, yeah, the social media blast. It has been noted on the, some of our local news organizations or TV, and I don't know if we're going to do radio or not, but they are also on alert for once we get closer to that project release, that they will providing updates as well.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Speaking as an idiot who wandered through your construction site and was caught doing so, tell me why that's a bad idea and what pedestrian safety risks are currently there, but also with regards to the traffic management plan that's currently in progress, thoughts on the pedestrian access while it's in progress?
Yeah, absolutely. So as you are aware, I do have, we did close down the west side of Broadway for pedestrians. Some people are still walking through there, which we'll not judge, but the reason that it's closed is there's a gap between the roadway, the sidewalk, and the ground that is below it. So on the east side, we have injected some grout to hold that stable, but yeah, there is a risk. There's just a safety risk of people walking through there. Due to the timing of the project, there was a cost to benefit analysis and replacing all of that and doing a temporary fix or closing it because the east side remained open, we left that side open. During construction, there will be one side available for pedestrian traffic each time, and we do advise people not to walk through the construction sites.
Council, any other questions? Well, you want, you can, go ahead and you can make a comment now about it. We'll go through and do the individual resolutions there. Go ahead.
Okay, so I, I'm just really grateful for your work. I feel like this project is a feather in the cap of the city of Littleton increasing trail accessibility, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to to support that as a member of the council, so I really appreciate your work on this. And I want to also just randomly say that two of your colleagues showed up at my house to look at the sanitary sewer behind my house, and I mentioned that I worked for the council, and they immediately started singing your praises. They were like, she is the best thing in the city, and they, they also said you were creating an amazing amount of work for them, but they were, but that was said, it was said with 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 praise and and they just said great things about you, and it was completely unprompted, they didn't know who I was, and and they really appreciate your work, and I appreciate your work, and I'm grateful for this opportunity that I get to vote for this, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Grove?
A quick comment. I travel across Broadway all the time, and it's very treacherous because people are turning left, and I'm very, very excited about this project, so thank you.
Any other comments? I'll just have one more, just kind of to add on to the laudatory comments there. At the Mile High Flood District Board Meeting last month, an unnamed individual, and he's only unnamed because I forgot his name, also saying your praises and said you are wonderful to work with, and the entire, the entire Littleton staff is as well, but said that, called you out by name, so thank you for putting all this good work and for the city and and looking at this one, you know, going above and beyond like, hey, we could just replace the culvert, but you can also do a bigger project, maybe put a little bit more work on for staff, but also in the long run actually saves money going for it, even though it's a big expense right now, having to open this up again in the future to put in a path would not have been a wise move, and this was a wise move, so thank you so much. Mayor Protem?
So I'm going to save the spiel about stormwater asset maintenance and management across our city because I think we're going to get into that in future meetings, but again, thank you, Sarah. And I also want to point out, you know, these projects aren't, are almost inconceivably expensive for cities of our size to take on ourselves, and that is why we are, you know, approving three different resolutions tonight because these three different agencies are co-funding alongside us. I will also point out that, you know, we have many projects, trail projects, park projects, you know, other projects, you know, across our infrastructure base that basically require us to have co-funding models like this in order to actually get them achieved. We just do not have the capital to do it by ourselves. If we want manageable control over projects like this in the future and not necessarily having to take the time and effort to apply for grants, hope and pray that we get them, and abide by the qualifications and, you know, conditions of those grants and those respective agencies, then we either have to raise that, those funds ourselves or not do the work. So this is going to be another example of why we have these regional partnerships, why it's important that we as council stay engaged in those regional partnerships. It makes a difference for our park projects, our trail projects, this project, our Santa Feyan mineral work. This stuff doesn't happen in isolation, so thank you again for putting in all the effort.
Great. All right, Council, we have three individual resolutions, so we'll just take action on them individually here.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution forty-seven dash twenty twenty-five, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Littleton and the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Arapahoe, state of Colorado regarding the 2025 contribution of Arapahoe County Open Space Program Funds for the Lee Gulch Trail Pedestrian Underpass.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution forty-seven. Council, any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, the voting is open.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution forty-eight dash twenty twenty-five, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Littleton and South Suburban Parks and Recreation District regarding funding contributions, construction, and maintenance of the Lee Gulch Trail Pedestrian Underpass Project.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution forty-eight. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, the voting is open.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution forty-nine dash twenty twenty-five, approving a third amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with Mile High Flood District regarding design and construction of drainage and flood control improvements for the Lee Gulch at Broadway.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution forty-nine. Council, is there any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, voting is open.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. And next up, general business, we have resolution eighteen of twenty twenty-five, approving the first amendment to a construction agreement with E and M Concrete LLC for the twenty-two four miscellaneous concrete project, city project number twenty-four dash zero five. Turn over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as you noted, this is an amendment to a contract for twenty twenty-four from our our concrete program, which is part of our pavement management program. Just to kind of set the the stage for this, I just want to, want to, want to remind council and the public that over the last couple of years, we have established a new city charter provision regarding procurement. Council's adopted a procurement ordinance that brings the city into kind of modern standards for 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 procurement policies, and then we also at the staff level have have adopted those policies consistent with the ordinance to give our staff even further direction on how to, you know, ensure that we're meeting the goals of the the ordinance and the charter. So with that, I'll just note that we, over the, at that same time period, we've really ramped up our capital program, as as council knows, and have, you know, really greatly increased the number of capital project contracts we have, and at the same time, we've also been evaluating our, our, our relation- And at the same time, we've also been evaluating our relationships with all of our vendors to make sure that those contracts are compliant with current policies and the ordinance. So as we've done that, our contracts have doubled, I think I might have said, over that couple of year period. And you'll be hearing more in the budget discussion in a couple of weeks about the need for some more resources to manage all of these contracts and make sure that we have training in place for them. But tonight, I want to just, we're here to talk about an occasion that we have. Occasionally, we do have situations where the authority for spending in a contract has been exceeded. Our new, our current purchasing policy requires council approval for expenditures over a certain amount. And that amount is five hundred thousand dollars. That was not the case in our old policies, so we're, we've been bringing more and more contracts for city council involvement and approval. Similarly, when we do have a case where we go over that authorized amount in the contract, it's appropriate per the policy and really by best practice that we bring that contract back to council for consider of, and consideration of an increase so that we can pay for the work that has been done in an overage of that approved contract. So tonight, we have our public works managers who supervise this work and also our interim finance director, who can kind of give an overview first of what happened. But I think gives some emphasis to, you know, since we have this policy in place, what management action are we taking to make sure that we avoid these kinds of issues in the future so that we can be compliant with the procurement policy? So with that, I'll turn it over to our public works director, Brent Soderland.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Brent Soderland, Director of Public Works and Utilities. So tonight, we're basically, we're going to go over the miscellaneous concrete program, the additional work that was performed, the project costs. Then we're going to go over some of the BEX practices that we've instituted. And then we'll also go over the council resolution. I'm going to turn it over to Matthew to cover the twenty-twenty-four miscellaneous concrete program in more detail.
Good evening, council. As you know, the miscellaneous concrete program is an annual program that the city performs. And we do this program with the goals and benefits of providing safety, mobility and ADA compliant upgrades to a lot of our concrete facilities throughout the city. That includes curb and gutter sidewalks. It improves our connections to multimodal facilities at bus stops, bike facilities, trail connections. It is also an opportunity to address C Click Fix or other residential complaints that might be within the project area or directly adjacent to that project area. Something that is also a critical component is the miscellaneous concrete improves drainage along existing roadways in advance of pavement preservation programs, such as surface sealing or melon overlays. And it protects that financial investment for those preservation treatments. This year's program was performed in fall of twenty-twenty-four. We completed about eighty-eight hundred square yards of concrete removal and replacement. And it includes several neighborhoods throughout the city ahead of a planned surface sealing program. So where we started working was some of the additional work that was brought into our focus. As you can see from the photo on this slide, this is C Click Fix. That was in one of the additional areas that was directly adjacent to the project area. This is one of, I would say, three main components that led to this overage. And that's going to be a bus stop at Grant Way and Broadway, some installation of warning plates throughout neighborhoods to make ramps larger and more accessible. And then the removal and replacement of severely damaged concrete throughout some of the project areas and directly adjacent streets, such as the photo on this slide. Here you can see some of the areas that we worked in. It is in the green. And those are areas that we went through. We replaced concrete that was severely damaged. Severely damaged meaning there's a notable offset vertically or the concrete's starting to separate or it's seeing severe spalling on that surface that would provide a hazard to either drainage or for safety hazards to the public. You'll see the blue marked out and you can see the bus stop at Grant Way and Broadway as well as the neighborhood locations off of Peak View towards the central part of the city. One additional area was the sidewalk along Jameson Way, which is city-owned and maintained. And it had cracking going through the whole thing, which provided a safety hazard for users of the open space.
Quick question here.
Sure.
For this one, so the green is all the original contract?
Yes.
And then the blue is the additional work that's covered by this amendment?
Yes.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah. And the red is areas that we did not end up going into. Once we realized that there was a calculation error from the original project estimate, we immediately halted all work. We stopped the contractor that day, actually. We just, we walked out and we're like, yep, you're done, just hold on. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, as soon as we were aware that we were overspending, we stopped and wanted to make sure we were proceeding correctly.
Another question. So then the red was area that was supposed to be covered by the original contract?
Yes.
But wasn't?
Yes.
It looks like, so was there, it was an overestimate of?
Yeah.
How much work could be done? Or was the contractor just charging a lot more than was estimated?
No, when the data was collected using GIS, there was just a data transfer error that we went into and investigated why the numbers didn't transfer correctly. We wanted to make sure that we were being exact with our investigation of why this overage and why those numbers came through incorrectly. So some of those areas in red also, even though it looks like a larger area, they actually had very small quantities in those neighborhoods just because places like Beaumar South do not have sidewalks. Littleton Village is relatively newer, so the concrete's actually in really good shape. So while it might look like a larger area, the actual affected quantities are pretty minimal in those.
Can you clarify what you mean by the numbers didn't come over correctly?
Yeah.
I, I'm confused how, you know, you planned on doing one thing, you did some other stuff and didn't get into the stuff you were planning on. It's a little confusing.
Of course. So when we collect the data using GIS, you transfer that into AutoCAD, which is what we use to make our maps. And so when you do the project takeoff from the maps, some of those numbers that may have come through as like a four, it may have transferred into Excel as like a three, for example. It didn't equate one to one based on the mapping tool.
Somebody doesn't review it to make sure it's correct?
They, yeah, that's something that we'll cover in our best practices of how we'll do
Okay, thank you.
quality control checks moving forward, so.
Before you go on, I had a question on the map there a little bit.
Sure.
Are the areas in red which were supposed to be done this past cycle here, are they on the plan for in the future or are all of them or?
Yes, we will, you know, we're not going to just dismiss them. Our surface seal program actually ended up getting bumped off of twenty-twenty-five due to higher priority projects. So we will make sure that we get out and we continue and we finish up the areas.
But they weren't part of the three-year plan that was presented before? Because there's one of the streets I didn't read that I'm well familiar with that I didn't see on the future planning and it was supposed to be done in the past that I just wanted.
Which one?
No, no comment.
No, we will make sure that we address, it's in our best practice to address all streets before we surface seal to make sure we're doing our best effort to preserve.
My point is just, if we were planning on doing these, I hope they get into the hopper and are done sooner rather than later and not forgotten about.
No, we will not forget about them. As you can see from this photo, this is an example of some of the additional work done. This is the bus stop at Grant Way and Broadway, which was brought to our attention from C Click Fix as well as residential correspondence. This work was done within twelve hours in one day to minimize disruption to Broadway. So the contractor worked with high quality and high efficiency. So they were, they were really good partners with the city.
So before we get into the best practices, I just want city council to know that myself and the other public works managers do take this overage in, within the contract very seriously. And so that's why we came up with these best practices that we identified here. And, you know, we're doing some extra training with our project managers and with our inspectors to make, to ensure this doesn't happen in the future. So Matthew touched on this a little bit. The first one is really to improve our quality control processes, right? To make sure that that data transfer happens accurately and that we go ahead and we double check that. The other one is to make sure that we have consistent city staff on the projects throughout the project. Once you pull staff off and you bring in a new project manager or a new inspector, they have to basically kind of relearn that project. So keeping the same project manager and inspector on the, on the entire project will help. Also, I guess determining how much C Click Fix work that we need to do. One thing we need to probably take advantage of is our on-call concrete contractors, right? So we should be addressing these C Click Fixes throughout the entire year. When this particular project was brought forward, we did not have the on-calls contractors yet. So I would assume that in the future, or I would say going forward in the future, we'll be able to address more C Click Fixes with the on-calls. The other one is to make sure that we identify all the appropriate stakeholders. And for example, South Park HOA actually was responsible for a portion of the concrete within their neighborhood. We did realize that as part of the project and did some extra quantities because of that. And then the last thing is if we do come across an error, we want to make sure that we inform city council of any changes and make sure that we do corrective actions that are required.
So as you can see with this slide, this just shows what the original contract value was, which was the one million twenty-four thousand thirty-three dollars. And the additional work for those neighborhoods as mentioned, as well as the C Clicks, C Click Fixes was one hundred and twenty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars for a total contract value of one million one hundred and forty-five and six hundred and ninety-nine dollars, approximately 12% of the contract value. Just a brief overview, the capital program team has been and is still very consistent with our procurement policy. We make sure that these bids are competitive. With this bid, we had eleven received and E and M Concrete was the lowest responsible bidder. Our staff recommends the approval of the First Amendment of the construction agreement with E and M Concrete for the twenty-twenty-four miscellaneous concrete project.
And we'd be happy to take any questions that counsel may have.
Counsel, any questions? I'm going to jump in, I have another one here. With that, that last slide, I guess, looking at the RFPs and the bids.
Yes.
Thinking about the, I'm trying to figure out how to say this, with the map that showed, it looked, I don't know what the numbers are. I'm just going to say it looked like fifty percent, fifty percent of the street did not get, have construction on it because it was
Sure.
miscalculated. Did any of the bidders not say, hey, this is, the numbers that are out there aren't making a lot of sense? Is there any kind of contingency in that way to say, you know, what we, are the numbers that?
No, and so there's several ways to collect data. GIS is certainly one of them. It's a little bit more advanced. It's something that's more efficient once you nail it down. And we've had success with it in the past. The other option is to walk with a physical map for, you know, the thirty-five lane miles and just draw little squares and then try to manually convert that over. It's very tedious. But when you look at it across thousands of these little squares, it looks normal. Like you wouldn't notice unless you were, you know, really, unless you had a reason to look into each little one. It, it makes sense.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, so you said, you know, thirty-five lane miles and, you know, however many little, we'll just say potholes you're filling or whatever you're doing there. You put that out there and that information you provided to the bidders was incorrect, is that what?
Yes, so mayor, just to add a little context, so when we bid out these projects, we bid out the bid schedule and they're actually bidding on quantities, not in the particular area. So they're bidding on a square yard of concrete work, not necessarily the neighborhood that they'll be working in.
Correct, so you hit, you basically hit that maximum of the square yards of concrete work and it didn't cover it. So that's what it was, okay, that's, I'm just trying to understand that, thanks. Oh, that's fine. Any other, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, just hello, Temporary Finance Director. And, you know, hopefully you don't have that job title any, for too much longer. That's more for, no, no, not because you haven't been doing a fantastic job, but mostly because I hope you get to move on to other things.
Keep digging there, Mayor Protem.
No, I just wanted to, you know, because I think we have this in front of us tonight because it exceeded the city manager approval authority of that 10% overage for a contract amendment. I, I think just kind of for the public record, what we're doing here is essentially approving a contract amendment that is retroactive to work that is already previously performed. Not approving said contract amendment would put us kind of in, you know, butting heads essentially with our contractor for whom we owe that money. But can you explain to me a little bit about kind of procurement process with regards to when these overages do occur? And they do occur, right? Like, and I hope, well, I'll get into that in a second. You're not here to be kind of, you know, laid out on the table as, you know, having exceeded a contract value. That is something that does occur. But I'd like to kind of hear a little bit more about when these overages do occur for work that was performed, be it public works or finance or legal. You know, what, what might be the process that you would go through to approve that and make that amendment?
Sure, there's a couple of different avenues. In, in construction, there are field order change directives. In emergency situations or when you're trying to make a quick decision, typically those are for smaller thresholds. For, in a situation like this where it's a contract that required council approval, we would require prior authorization before approving that work in advance. And so this, obviously, we're going in a bit of a different route for that, this situation. But typically, yes, in, in, you know, following our procurement policy, our staff would go through the process of asking for approval before issuing a change order that would be approved by city council. Because anything greater than 10%, that was, it actually, anything over a dollar for anything that was originally approved by city council would still have to go back to city council for approval.
Okay, I appreciate that explanation. And, and, you know, I think the thing that I also want to kind of make clear to the public is that, you know, I appreciate the information you put up here about the bid process for the original contracting. But we are essentially tonight, you know, making a conscious decision to circumvent our normally approved procurement process in order to make up for the error that was created essentially. Is that a pretty fair summary?
So counsel, I just, I just, as a So, Councilmember, just, I just, as a clarification, we are following the procurement policy by bringing back this amendment. We have not paid the contractor for the additional work that they've done already. And so, in order for us to do that, we need to bring this amendment back so that we could pay the contractor.
Yeah, yes, you are correct. Thank you, I appreciate that, that, kind of the nuance of that clarification. Even though the work that was currently performed, it does put us in kind of a financial risk or liability essentially at not fulfilling the obligation of this amendment. But, you know, I, I, actually, I just wanted to comment, you know, prior to taking the vote, that I appreciate you all laying out kind of what happened, but more importantly, that this does happen in governance, you know, all the time. And quite frankly, it's more about those best practices and, and quality assurance measures that you can put in place to learn from that. So, I appreciate you all kind of being very thorough about kind of detailing, you know, those checks that you have along the way. So, thank you, I really appreciate it.
And we do try to limit the, this occurrences to our greatest extent possible.
Anyone else? I have another couple of questions here, kind of going off that. Question for the City Attorney, what legal or what liability would we have if we say, Council says, no, we're, we're, we're budget strapped, we can't afford $120,000 more, we're not gonna approve this amendment? I assume the contractor would want to be paid for work that they did, whi, which kind of gets me into my next, kind of, I'll let you think on that for a little bit there.
They would sue us.
And, and it, and maybe the heavy hand of state bureaucracy that's beaten me down over the years, as a contract manager for the state, but I know that this, the statutory violation is the term that we've tried, is that no work can be approved without, it's not, you can't just pay, you just can't approve work or have work without a contract or a change order. And so, I guess the next question would be, do we need to have any adjustments to our procurement policy, whether that is to be more explicit in that, or better training, or even maybe more flexibility to say, hey, that we can, that we understand things like this occur? And I do, do want to say, I do commend staff for having their head in the right place, like, hey, we can, this, this should save time and money to do it this way, as we saw with the last presentation, kind of with the getting ahead of the game with putting in the trail where the culvert is, that, that's the right idea and it probably did save time
Yes.
in the long run there, so. So, liability question and then procurement policy change.
Sure, on the liability question, most likely the contractor would file a claim with the city and/or litigation with the city seeking compensation for the work that they were directed to perform by whoever it was out in the field. So, they would be suing the city.
So, likely, we're paying this either way.
Correct, and probably some attorney's fees along, along the way. You know, as it relates to the purchasing policy, I just kind of wanted to make kind of a broad comment. So, especially when it comes to construction projects, it is not unusual that there are change orders that occur on a project. In fact, it would be unusual if there were not. And so, one of the, I guess, kind of constraints, if you will, that the city has, not only with the purchasing policy, but the way that we've set up our purchasing ordinance is, once we get above, on that certain level, we can't just approve things like you could out in the field. Like, you sign off on something, I bring something to Jim, he signs off on it, we have to come back to council. So, it does create a little bit of, I would call it a challenge at times. And that's one of the reasons that when we bid out contracts, we typically include some level of contingency, because when folks are out in the field, they oftentimes come across things that were not in the plans, were not in the designs, which raise those costs. So, going through the best practices that Public Works has gone through, I think we're positioned well, and this is sadly a good reminder to be very attentive to what's going on in the field and making sure that we can address those as we see them. As it relates to the state's policy, if you will, where there are kind of violations, if you will, of state law, we don't have that within our local ordinance. I don't know of any other jurisdictions that have that. I can certainly, I don't think it, we necessarily need that, but I'll defer to City Council as to whether or not we need to have anything baked into either our policy or code. I don't believe so. I would tell you that most likely, those types of kind of violations of our purchasing policy will probably be noted in that person's performance evaluation. And continuing to violate said policy will probably lead to changes in staffing.
I would second.
Okay. And I wasn't necessarily getting at penalties per se, but just the whole idea with the procurement training that all of the contract manager's staff do, and, you know, it's, it's a little, I'll say a worm that's in my brain, but that doesn't fit with assurance.
And I will tell you over the next, well, in a couple of weeks, as well as over the next few months, we are gonna have a lot more robust training from the City Attorney's Office as well as our Purchasing Department. I know that our Acting Director of Finance has assembled a group of citywide stakeholders to partake in some of the challenges that we've seen in kind of rolling out the new policy. I will say, the new policy is, is new in the sense that, really more in the sense that it's the accountability phase. We've always had a purchasing policy in place for the city. We've just never necessarily taken the steps that we're taking now, that the City Manager's Office is taking now, in enforcing that accountability, so.
I'll know too, Mayor, if I may, that some of the, these policies require steps in our financial software that offer controls like purchase orders to a larger extent than we had, that give us that connection between the financial system and the, the control on paying beyond the, the authorized amount and the contract management in the field. So, there are, we have greater controls in, in place now that will help us do this the right way.
Thanks. And I'm not trying to admonish any one person or any, or department here, but as we are kind of the caretakers of public taxpayer funds here, and ultimately, things like this that come back to council that we have to approve and, and be held liable for that way to the residents, I just want to make sure that we're doing as good of a job as possible and that we all are, have a fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers, so, thank you. All right, so, I gotta get back, I've changed off here. Any other questions, Council? Do you know, um, we do have, I will entertain a motion? Anyone else ready to make the motion?
Yes, Mayor.
I move to approve Resolution 18-2025, approving the First Amendment to a construction agreement with E&amp;M Concrete LLC for the 2024 miscellaneous concrete project, city project number 2405.
A motion and a second by Councilmember Zink. So, motion and a second to approve Resolution 18. Council, is there any further discussion or comments on Resolution 18? Councilmember Zink?
Just quickly, you know, despite the fact that this was an overage and we've now got some best practices in place that should hopefully help us to avoid these kinds of issues in the future, it looks to me like they did good work. It's work that needed to be done. They've worked with us on other projects, I'm assuming, and done a good job. I, I think we gotta pay them. That's, that's the bottom line.
Mayor Proton?
I just wanted to say thanks to the City Manager, City Attorney and Public Works folks and everyone involved, because I know this was slow walking, this even more than probably we really wanted to. I know contractors want to get paid, but I think this kind of level of transparency is really important to put out in the public when it happens, and so, I appreciate the work you put into it.
Anything else? I concur with those two gentlemen as well. So, we do have a motion and a second and no other comment, voting is open.
The vote is seven in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Before we move on to ordinances on second reading in public hearings, we have two. Council, we're gonna take a quick break. We love a break, well, we'll take a break, we'll be back at 8:30. We're back with the thrilling Ordinance 03-2025, an ordinance on second reading approving a five-year master agreement with Xerox Corporation for Print Technology Software and Services. City Manager?
I'll say real briefly, consistent with our theme of procurement compliance tonight, our charter states that any agreement longer than two years must be approved by City Council. So, while there's not a lot of sizzle to this steak, I will ask our, our, our IT Director, Scott Rogers, to give us an overview of the contract, thanks.
Yes, you're now entering the world of multi-function devices provided to us by Xerox. So, yeah, so Ordinance 03-2025 is a master agreement between the City of Littleton and Xerox for a five-year agreement to sort of oversee our printing and multi-function device, devices. So, the policy question is before you is the City Council support approving a master agreement with Xerox Corporation, leveraging the National Association of State Procurement Officials Value Point Cooperative Agreement for Multi-Function Devices Related Software Services and Cloud Solutions. So, this again provides us with a five-year roadmap for our print services. It will continue to help with device consolidation, optimization, the standardization of devices, sustainability and just general efficiencies throughout the, the contract. We are leveraging the cooperative agreement, which is, really already has prices that have been negotiated with that, of state procurement officials. And so, the, the other part of this is council approval is needed for multi-function device leases that are longer than a single year. So, for us, the staff analysis, it provides a central management which streamlines support and procurement for processes and leverages economies of scale. And so, that also supports our high-quality governments by providing efficiencies and resources and increased visibilities to our spend. So, Xerox helps us sort of manage how much we print, how often we use these devices and what resources we're using. And so, fiscal impacts, there's really no impact with the overall agreement. However, with the specific leases being under NASPO, we're already seeing in the first lease with these three new copiers or multi-function devices, additional 10% reduction in the print cost and up to 25% in the lease costs for the first three copiers or multi-function devices that we're bringing in. And on top of that, we have also received word, contracts that are outside of NASPO are subject to tariff changes. The devices that are within the NASPO agreement, well, the prices will stay the same. They are not subject to pricing changes based on tariffs. So, our alternatives, approve the master agreement to allow efficiencies and cost savings throughout the organization, or not approve the master agreement and forego those efficiencies and cost savings. So, staff, we, I recommend, we recommend approval of the ordinance.
Council, any?
Any questions?
Councilmember Zink?
Yes.
Would you mind?
Sorry, would you mind going back just two slides?
Sure.
This one?
Yes.
Is this just another way of saying one's cheaper than the other?
Yeah, so basically, the alternative is you approve the agreement and yes, we can realize some of those cost savings through the NASPO agreement, or you say no and then we just negotiate with Xerox independently of the cooperative agreement, which would mean, you get to see me again, I would come back, but I prefer not.
I was gonna, I don't have a problem with that. These cost savings would be then predictable over that five-year time period, right?
Yes, so for the, the three copiers that are basically part of this ordinance that are sort of wrapped in to the master agreement, we're seeing lower pricing for the individual cop, the individual printing charges and with the actual leases for the three devices that we're that we're replacing, are we're saving 25% based on the current leases, and then the printing costs are already showing 10% lower. So those are fixed costs that will be over the next 60 months for those devices.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions, counsel? I have one kind of question for the city attorney. With Tabor, with, I know Tabor kind of pooh-poohs multi-year contracts, do we, is there any issue with having this multi-year contract? Do we have to renew it every year to get past Tabor, or is there some, how does that, how does that work?
Yeah, generally, contracts that we enter into that are multi-term have within those a fiscal appropriation. So unless there's appropriation of monies for that next year, if you will, then it would give us the opportunity to terminate those agreements. So as long as there's the ability to terminate those agreements annually, then it does not run afoul of the Tabor bar on multi-term fiscal agreements.
Great, thank you.
How am I clear? So we're entering into a five-year agreement, but we can terminate it at any point in time?
You'd be able to terminate for failure to appropriate money. So if city council didn't appropriate money for it, yes.
Any other questions? The only other question is, does Xerox all their contracts that long? So you might have to print it out and read it on paper there just to...
The NASPO agreements, the cooperative agreements are usually extensive in their coverage and page count, for sure.
Great, thanks. As this is an ordinance on second reading, requires a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing at 8:37. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak? Pam?
I'm Pam Chadborn, blocking half from here, and you can probably anticipate, I didn't read the whole thing, but I'm concerned about privacy. So multi-function devices like those, and you know, they, they do note that they're, they recognize certain types of information that are supposed to be kept privileged. But I'm concerned about where this information goes. They pretty much look at the information that's being copied or reproduced or sent or transmitted. All of it may be able to go to them. And I'm not sure what protections we have as a city. And that's my concern. I don't, I don't see that alternative or description or impact described. It wasn't presented to you folks as an option. That may have been done by the city, and maybe there's no escape from it, but I'm not sure that it's not wiser to spend money and protect information, especially public information. The society at large is being very casual about this. And we have tens of thousands of identity thefts every year, if not more than that. There's a price being paid here, which is our information, and I'm concerned about it and would have liked to have seen information about that. Are these discounts really worth it? That's my question. Thanks.
Pam, anybody else in the audience wish to speak? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public comment at 8:39. Counsel, any other questions, or is there a motion?
Mayor, move to approve ordinance 03-2025, an ordinance on second reading approving a five-year master service agreement with Xerox Corporation for Print Technology Software and Services.
A motion and a second by Councilmember Driscoll to approve ordinance three. Counsel, any further discussion or comments? Counselmember Grove?
Can somebody answer Pam Chadborn's question?
Yeah, I, I can. Xerox doesn't necessarily have, well, they do not have any direct access through internet or our network to access any information that's been copied on these machines. And before they leave our possession, we do wipe the hard drives that are on these devices with the DOD-based wipe, so that rewrites zeros to the hard drives that are on these devices before they leave our possession.
Thanks, Scott.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. We do have a motion and a second to approve ordinance three. Voting is open.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. Next up, item B, ordinance eight of 2025, ordinance on second reading imposing a temporary moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing, or approval of any new application related to fuel sales retail within the city of Littleton. Throw this directly to the city attorney. Let him get comfortable over there. That's the shortest presentation ever. Thank you. Reed, counsel, any questions?
I'm not smart enough to actually set this up.
Should we call the IT director back in here?
No. I think I've got it. If I can figure out the full screen button, then. Good evening, mayor.
Good thing it's municipal clerk's week, because look at this. Fill it in for you.
It was International Lawyer Day, or Be Kind to Lawyers Day on like May 1st.
I missed that one.
Just, yeah, just missed it. Yeah. So tonight, we're talking about fuel sales, i.e. gas station moratorium. If council will recall, a few weeks ago, we had staff come in and give a presentation based, basically about where fuel stations currently are, the current status of them within the city of Littleton. So...
Run of applause for the city clerk.
Thank you. It is municipal clerk week, so thank you. So tonight, we're going to consider that moratorium. Essentially, a moratorium allows us to prohibit certain uses, in this particular case, that could be in certain areas. Sometimes they're for a certain duration of time. And the intent on having those is to really protect against a particular harm that the city is seeing. In our case, it has been kind of the proliferation, if you will, of gas stations within the city of Littleton, as well as those within its near vicinity. So we've obviously heard about fuel sales within the city over the years. I know we've had a few councilpersons who have asked for us to bring this topic up, and so that's what we're talking about tonight. So just to kind of recap where we are, where our existing conditions are, there are currently 24 gas stations within the city of Littleton proper, and then there are an additional 20 gas stations within 1.5 miles of city limits. We currently have two projects that are in the queue. One is the Quick Trip on Santa Fe and Mineral. The other is the Costco gas station that is undergoing construction now. We've received one new gas station kind of query, but those are the only two, those last two are the only two current pending applications that are in the queue. Currently, fuel sales are allowed in two zoning districts, and they're pretty limited, but it's our BC and our IP zoning districts. And then they're, they're allowed as a conditional use in our neighborhood commercial or corridor mixed-use locations. So when something is listed as a conditional use, that means there is a hearing in front of planning commission who takes a look at a few of the criteria and decides whether or not to allow this sort of use in those zoning districts. So just kind of a couple of visualizations right now. The purple areas on the map are where you would allow for conditional use. Those are the NC and CM zoning districts. So anyone wanting to put in a gas station there would have to come in and go through kind of the public hearing process to get a conditional use permit in front of our planning commission. There are a few PLOs or PDs that restrict fuel sales as well, so that's kind of a, an additional overlay on where they're allowed. Generally speaking, in order to build a gas station, you need about an acre of land to develop that. So this map, the visualization of the map, is showing those parcels that have essentially about an acre where those could, in theory, be placed. So based upon that, staff had presented some options to city council for their consideration. One of those was to enact a temporary moratorium, and the purpose of that would be for staff to evaluate and bring back in the future, probably six months from now or less than that, some further ops, options for council or further restrictions related to fuel sales. Those could be more narrowly defining the zoning districts in which fuel sales could be located. We, so we could kind of refine that. We could broaden it if city council wanted to. We could also introduce some modifications to our conditional use permitting criteria. One of the things that we've seen across the metro area that other jurisdictions have done have been kind of buffering requirements. So specifically, as it relates to fuel sales, I'll give you three examples of what other jurisdictions have done. Not saying that's right for the city of Littleton, but just what other jurisdictions have done. So the city of Louisville, and this was a couple of years ago, they put a cap on the amount of fuel sales that can go in, on in their city at six. So they won't allow for anything more until one goes away. That's it. The city of Lakewood recently put in their own ban, if you will, or changes to their zoning that put in the buffering requirements. The buffering requirements being, in Lakewood's case, you can't build a fuel station within a half mile of any other fuel station. So that created a little bit of angst. The same goes for, in Lakewood's case, they also addressed car washes. They felt that there was a proliferation of car washes and gas stations. They took it a step further in Lakewood, and they added that any new gas station that if you could find one within those buffering requirements, actually had to provide for three EV charging stations. So that's what Lakewood did. Denver shortly thereafter put their own zoning changes in place as well, addressing fuel sales. And in Denver's case, they prohibited fuel sales from being anywhere within, they had a, within a quarter mile of another fuel station, as well as a quarter mile of any transit station. So that's what a few of the local jurisdictions have done that have been addressing this type of concern. But one of the things that we could do is we could add or decide whether or not we should have a buffering requirement. I think at our study session, council member Driscoll brought up the place on Lowell where there's basically two gas stations that are back-to-back, and whether or not that's appropriate for the city of Littleton. So something that we could consider, or staff could consider, in making additional kind of fine-tuning to our conditional use permitting process. So that's essentially what is before city council. So there is a temporary ordinance in front of you tonight for your consideration. It would basically ban, if you will, any new submittals of applications for fuel sales for a period of six months. And during that six months, it would allow for staff to bring back to council, do more evaluations, study, and bring back to city council their findings or any changes that could be done to our city code to perhaps more narrowly tailor where they can be and where it is appropriate. Of note, within the ordinance, it is not going to apply to the existing Costco gas station, nor to the Quick Trip that's on Santa Fe and Mineral proposed ones. Those are already in the pipeline. It would be my recommendation not to apply this retroactively to development projects that have been in the queue for such a long period of time. Denver did that, and Denver is facing a lot of litigation as a result. Generally, not a good practice, but certainly something that council could do if council wanted to roll that dice. So happy to discuss and answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Grove?
I have a couple. Why do we have so many gas stations? Are they just super profitable? I mean, what's the appeal? And why Littleton?
I, I can't answer that, but I would assume they're probably pretty profitable and relatively low overhead, and we're, parts of our city are on major kind of commercial corridors.
Councilmember, I'd say that's the reason.
Yeah, and I'd say that would be a response for staff to come up with.
Yeah, that's a good speculation. Again, this may be out of your wheelhouse, but I want to ask, what?
No, I said objection, speculation.
Oh. What is the environmental concerns we hear about? Do you know why people are so concerned about the environment and gas stations?
I would...
That's something we could, that's...
Yeah, I think that's...
That's a good note. It's helpful for us to hear these, these, these questions, because we can, this can be part of the research that we bring back to you.
Okay. And then the last question is, you've talked about what other cities have done in terms of caps and buffering. We have so many gas stations. Is there an opportunity, or do you think it's possible to recommend, or do you even think we should consider no more gas stations, you know, for, and then when we need them, we change the code again?
I mean, that's a possible option for city council. I would say that perhaps a challenge with, with capping it is there could be locations that come forward in the future that may be better locations than where an existing one is. And so something, it's certainly an option, and something staff will evaluate whether or not there are simply too many as it exists right now. I know that there are differing studies that take a look at kind of the, the per capita, how many gas stations to people are appropriate, and depending upon what AI, Chad, you're, you're looking at it sometimes 20, you know, one gas station for every 2,500 people. And so generally, the market probably decides on, you know, what works for them. You know, as we look at Santa Fe, and we look at the anticipated growth to the south of us in Douglas County, obviously, gas stations are, probably would do pretty well along that stretch. And so it's one of the reasons that we're exploring this moratorium is to kind of protect and preserve, if you will, potentially the various types of, of commerce that's going on within our city, and making sure that we have a pretty healthy base and different base of commercial options for the residents within our city.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing options presented by staff.
Counsel, any questions? Mayor Proton?
Just a, I guess, quick clarification. So in terms of what staff is bringing back to council, to council member Grove's point on the economic analysis, that's going to be looking at both fuel sales as well as associated business, you know, essentially adjacent to those fuel sales. So like, you know, at commodities, small stores that have fuel sales as part of that business, that's going to be a part of that economic analysis?
Just to manage expectations, this, this would be a, probably a high-level, you know, research review of the economic impacts. We'll engage our economic development staff to help with, with this, and I think it's helpful to hear even kind of the finer points of questions that you're asking. But compared to some other economic analysis that we talk about, this would be, you know, would be intended to help kind of assist council's consideration, but most of our work will be focused on land use options. Just want to kind of caution that, we'll see, we'll see what we can learn to bring back to you.
Yeah, sales tax revenue numbers and whatnot associated with businesses even in the last year would be probably sufficient. But yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other comment? I just had one question for the city attorney with, kind of with the results of buffers versus numbers. Is a outright ban on any new ones, just, I mean, I guess that would be a cap at the current number, although if something were to go away, I mean, can you just say there's no new ones allowed? Is that a legal possibility for staff to come back to and as a potential option?
Yeah, I would, I would say having a cap would be illegal. Saying that you can't have fuel stations at all within your city would probably not be the best legal solution.
How is that different than sales of cats and dogs? Not to bring that up again, but I'm just, it's, in my mind, if you, you're saying... Not to bring that up again, but in my mind, if you're saying you can have one type of sale, but not another? I mean, we could also say there's no recreational marijuana if we wanted to, could have.
Right, I would say statutorily, on the latter one, you were, all municipalities were given that option to either allow it or not allow it.
Okay, I was just wondering, and that might be just something to come back with, is a possibility or not a possibility, or other fun legalist ways of communicating?
Everything is possible.
Says the attorney. All right, no more questions. Let's see, get back here. This is a ordinance on second reading, a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? We had one person sign up. Pam?
My name is Pam Chaper, and I still live a block in a half from here. So I'd like to thank our attorney for letting us know that there are two specific applications in the queue now. I am curious about others that have been hanging around for a long time who might suddenly want to sue us, and I'm curious who those might be. But my concern about this is that the fuel station study objectives for staff are not clear, and I would like to ask for clarity of what staff is aiming for. And let me say, through the urban renewal fight that we had to, we the citizens had to fight for 10 or 11 years against our urban renewal authority, we learned that a lot of these small gas stations distributed throughout the city, and they are not on corridors. They're not on corridors, they're distributed in the neighborhoods, kind of near where the small shopping centers were. Let me point out to you that the good bones that Littleton has is these 12 or 14 neighborhood centers. Walkability, we had walkability in our land use code and zoning map intentionally by the people who 50 years ago set out that zoning map. They intentionally created these small shopping centers and gas stations and other amenities surrounded by a variety of housing. And that is what our good bones are. And so that was intentional in our layout. And let me say also, learning from the rezoning request by Quick Trip originally on Dry Creek and Broadway, they said the fuel sales are our loss leader. We're here to sell sandwiches and food. Guys, that's what the gas stations in the neighborhoods accomplish, is that people who live around there can walk to the gas station and buy some little thing. And boy, when you live in a big city, that's actually what those small stores accomplish. So these fuel stations, the fact that they have a couple of pumps is one way that they survive, and they used to be service stations as well. But that's, I'm going to suggest to you that that's small-scale enterprise with the neighborhood service, selling small things, doing some car service, is part of the small-town character that people come to Littleton for, and that they like living here for. And then I don't think our community development folks have any clue about that, and I haven't heard it brought up in any of this discussion. I've heard planning commissioners bring up, oh, there's so many, and stuff like that, and I don't see the harm inherently in having many small ones distributed, except for environmentally. And that's important to me. And I spoke against the Quick Trip 500 feet from the river, because they shouldn't be near the river. Anyway, that's my concern, is I'm concerned we're wiping out something that's important to the character of Littleton and valuable to the character of Littleton. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public comment at 8:59. entertain a motion, counsel?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 08-2025, an ordinance on second reading imposing a temporary moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing, or approval of any new application related to fuel sales retail within the city of Littleton.
Second? A motion and a second by council member Recker. Counsel, any further comments or discussion? Councilmember Recker.
So I'm going to vote for this moratorium, but I'm very skeptical about the policy options for limiting fuel stations in Littleton going forward. And I want to, you know, the reality is, is that the closer you are to a fuel station, the shorter the distance you have to drive to refuel your car. And that, the longer you drive, the more pollution you make. So I'm not confident that more fuel stations equal more pollution, and in fact, you could say, there's an argument to be made for easier access to fuel stations reduces pollution. Second point, I would like the staff to talk to us about what are the environmental impacts of fuel stations. My understanding is, you know, the, there absolutely have been impacts of fuel stations on groundwater from leaking tanks, and I believe that that's less of a risk these days, and there have been impacts from evaporated fuel, and I believe that's less of an impact these days, and so I would like us to learn more about those. And, you know, in particular, the Louisville solution of limiting the number of stations to six creates monopoly opportunities to increase the prices for fuel for residents who live in the area. So I think there's a risk to that. And I want to say that it's been a while, but dang it, I agree with Pam. The, I think 7-Elevens are a modern, the modern-day bodega for our neighborhoods. And I remember hanging out at the 7-Eleven down the street from where I lived, and it had a couple of fuel pumps, and that's where you went to go get snacks and drinks. And I'm not confident that fuel stations are a negative impact. So I look forward to the conversation, I look forward to more information being brought forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Peters?
I would love to, as we move forward, hear more about why Denver did what they did. As we all probably know, a fan of having more chargers installed in Littleton. It doesn't totally make sense to me to tie them to gas stations, though. I feel like they should be places where people naturally spend time while their cars are charging, so I would love to have that conversation either here or elsewhere. But I guess I also agree with Pam a little bit. I don't know that we're seeing projects like that, though. So I guess I didn't hear any other city that has the right policy, and I would love to have a Littleton option that makes sense, because I feel like what we're seeing are big, massive proposals and projects that don't fit that small-town feel. But I look forward to the conversation, and I would also be in favor of this.
Councilwoman Zink?
I continue to retain some skepticism about limiting new gas stations in Littleton. I discussed this at our, the study session. I think that the sorts of options that the city staff could present to us, though, could be interesting. Buffer zones don't seem unreasonable to me. Other possible, I mean, the actual ordinance itself speaks to potential design concerns that we could address as well, about like, the kinds of gas stations that we are going to allow or not going to allow. I'm also interested, as council member Peters said, in potentially exploring chargers. I don't disagree that those might need to be where people actually spend time, long enough for their cars to charge. That being said, I'll support the moratorium, and I look forward to hearing from the city staff and the city manager about our options, and the city attorney. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, sure. I also, again, I'm going to support the moratorium, but I also am skeptical, like, I think I'm skeptical of the environmental arguments. I don't necessarily see the particular risk. Modern fuel stations have modern technology, sensorium equipment, and stuff like that to honestly prevent disasters that we've seen over previous decades. But I will say, too, that, you know, the, and I appreciate the public comment on this, because I am, I'm very much in favor of walkability of neighborhood, commercial, small, you know, small-formity neighborhood commercial services, hence kind of my curiosity about the economics of both like, fuel and non-fuel sales of some of these facilities. Again, I don't want to unintentionally kind of hamstring us, where if one is completely dependent on the other in order for that kind of long-term viability, I would hate to kind of lose that option, but would want to find ways that we could promote kind of that neighborhood commercial walkability, not necessarily with the fuel station. I just don't necessarily think that it may be the best and highest use of some of the land as we have it. That's kind of my primary concern, is just looking for best and highest use of our land. So I'll support it.
Councilmember Grove?
I, I'm leaning a little differently. I'm looking at the land use, and a gas station next to each other, like the 7-Eleven on Mineral and Broadway, and then the milk store right next to it. We looked at having a gas station where Manning's is now, and we have a restaurant right across the street from Sinclair. To me, that's not the best use of land when they're all so close together, and that we can look at other options for businesses than a gas station. But I'm open to what staff has to say, and maybe we should talk about, and maybe this goes beyond the high-level analysis that you set our expectations for, but the pros and cons. If we really limit this, what are the unintended consequences? If we don't limit it, how many more do we expect, and what else could go in there? Now, that's getting a little maybe beyond the scope of our initial project, but I think that might help us in terms of deciding what would be best for the city.
Anyone else? I'll just add on just a little bit, I, you know, I kind of agree with councilmember Grove about this. I'm looking at this as a kind of a land use decision of what, if we put something there, what are we missing out on potentially? Since I, you know, I'm not a huge fan necessarily, restricting what we can, what the city allows private businesses to do, but at the same time, there's another coin, looking at what else we could potentially lose out on. I think things I would like to hear back from staff are kind of the economic impact of a gas station, the various sizes, what we have here, what potentially would come. Even a look at like, trend on vehicle uses, I mean, is this kind of a, you know, we don't have, you know, buildings on Littleton Boulevard used to house operators. We don't have operators plugging in cords anymore to connect people like that. So I think as we kind of look kind of how the economy shifts in the future, and I would think, what I would like to see is kind of staff come back, I don't know how it fits time-wise, but kind of stepped approaches, say, hey, this is kind of narrow council's focus on, we don't want staff going too deep on, you know, let's just say, an outright ban if council's like, no, we don't want to do that, and have kind of look at how that would work. And so just going to say, hey, what's kind of a direction in the future to kind of find, comb that a little bit down there. I do have to say, I think, I don't know if I just didn't hear what the public comment was speaking, but I have to disagree, because I don't see any of our gas stations in neighborhoods. They're all on corridors. It's on Littleton Boulevard, Bowles, Broadway, Mineral, Lowell. And so it almost seemed like they wanted to expand where gas stations could go into neighborhoods. I think if we allowed gas stations in the middle of the neighborhoods, like on Ridge Road and Windermere, we would hear an uproar about that, of putting them there. I'm all for putting in more commercial use, like bodegas in places where people could get food in some of those places, but definitely not a, necessarily a gas station, but some more uses. You know, you don't walk to a gas station to get gas, you walk to a gas station to get other things. And if we can find those businesses that have those other things, that would be a better use than necessarily having a gas pumps there. So I will be supporting the moratorium, and looking forward to kind of getting some more information about this in the future. So is there a motion? Yep.
We have a motion and a second.
Did we do, oh, we need to do the motion in a second, sorry.
Yeah, we just need a vote if we're done discussing.
Then I will congratulate, or Mayor Protem Bar, I think he batted a thousand on every single motion tonight. All right, so we do have a motion and a second. Pam, you're up. Vote.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. And I think, mercifully, that is the end of the agenda here. So we are adjourned.